Let's call to order the Village of Riverside, Illinois special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on Wednesday, 2022. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Brahm.
A lot of people are still on mute, just so you know.
If you're in a quiet space.
I'm here.
If you're in a quiet space, you can keep, you don't need to mute yourself.
I'm here. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Commissioner Marhol.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Commissioner Peltier.
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson Mateo.
I'm here. We have a quorum. Attorney Mars, do you have something to say about remote meetings?
I do, as a matter of fact.
Wonderful.
So we are back to being remote. And consistent with the governor's most recent emergency declaration, various executive orders entered by the governor and recent amendments made to the Open Meetings Act. We are conducting meetings electronically again. As always, if you have trouble hearing, please get somebody's attention or or send a chat so the administration can get you back on. And just a reminder to the chairperson, all votes need to be roll call votes.
Speaking of which, I did not hear, you're kind of quiet, and I did not hear your last sentence.
Okay, let me try to get my volume increased, but all votes need to be roll call votes.
Right, thank you. And we do have staff who are present at village offices.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting minutes from December 20th, 2021?
Done, moved.
Second?
A second.
Thank you. Any edits? No changes? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Brahm.
Hi.
Commissioner Marhol.
Hi.
Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Matthews. Commissioner Peltier.
Hi.
And Chairperson Mateo.
Hi. Motion carries. And thank you, Francisco, for pulling those together so quickly. Next on our list, visitors, petitions, citizen requests, and communications. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to say anything? Hearing done, let's move on to the liaison report. Any village board update?
No updates.
Okay. So then next we'll reopen the public hearing, PZ 21-04 regarding 2710 South Harlem Avenue, special use and variations to consider an application from 2720 Harlem LLC, Milad Noramati, for a special use permit to allow parking lot as a primary use at 2710 South Harlem Avenue in the B1C zoning district. Additional variations will also are also sought regarding drive aisle widths and parking lot perimeters. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brahm.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Commissioner Marhol.
Hi.
Commissioner Miller.
Here, yes.
Commissioner Matthews.
Hi.
Commissioner Peltier.
Hi.
And Chairperson Mateo.
I am still here, so we still have a quorum. Wonderful. The public hearing was initially opened on Monday, December 20th, 2021, and continued to tonight, January 5th, 2022. No testimony on the special use or applicable variations was heard at that previous meeting. Notice was published in the landmark on December 1st, and again, notices were sent out on the 17th and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. Attorney Mars? Some background?
You're muted.
You're muted.
He's still muted.
We still can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Hold for our technical difficulties, please. Is there any? Is there any alternate audio input you can use?
Let's see if there's an extra pair of headphones.
Thank you. So Attorney Mars will provide some background information on the process, what was discussed on the 20th last month. And then we'll proceed to have a general discussion, and then we'll vote on the special use and the variations if we choose to close the public hearing. And then we will get to the site review plan, site plan review. How about now?
How about now?
Yes.
All right. So sorry. Um. So after that delay, yes, I thought it would be helpful for the benefit of both the PZC members and especially for those members of the public who were not at the last meeting or haven't really necessarily been following this matter until tonight, but are watching on Riverside TV or YouTube. To give a little background and overview as to what relief is being sought tonight and how we got to this point. So jumping back several years. 2710 South Harlem, which is the property that we're really talking about and focusing on tonight, was a dry cleaning facility. The village purchased that property several years ago, tore down the building, did some environmental remediation of the site, and it's been a vacant lot ever since. Immediately to the south of that property is 2720 South Harlem. And that's the site of the existing building at Long Common in Harlem that's currently a dental office, and that's owned by Dr. Noramati. Dr. Noramati also owns the former Title Max property to the north of our vacant lot at 2710 South Harlem. And that property has an address of 2704. So Dr. Noramati is preparing to sell the former Title Max property for use as a cannabis dispensary and has at the same time proposed to purchase from the village the 2710 South Harlem lot and to redevelop the lot as a parking lot for shared use by his dental office property and the 2704 dispensary property. He has a purchase contract with the village to buy 2710 South Harlem for that purpose. So under our zoning regulations, in order to use the 2710 property for the principal use of a parking lot, he needs a special use permit and a, as well as a couple of variations from the village's parking lot design standards. Okay, so those zoning approvals involve holding a public hearing before this body, the Planning and Zoning Commission. So when the village got his application, they published for and set a public hearing date for those zoning relief that he was seeking for December 20th. He also needed site plan review and approval, which is approval more of the design and layout of the parking lot. So the December 20th agenda also included that item. The original submitted site plan showed, the original one that he turned into staff showed just the 2710 South Harlem lot. So the design, proposed design at that time was he would turn in off of Harlem. Had a one-way drive aisle, you would exit out the back into the alley. And, and there was no access to the 2720 property or any other. It was just kind of a standalone lot. Village staff, after looking at that plan, conferred with Dr. Noramati, and they said that between staff and the engineers, they had concerns about exiting into the alley and thought that he might achieve a better design and more effective use of the properties if he opened it up and provided access onto the 2720 property, his existing property to the south. So, so he was open to those ideas and engaged a design professional and came up with a new site plan, which we, which was part of the, which the village received just prior to that December 20th meeting. Okay, so at that December 20th meeting, as the chairperson said, we opened and continued the public hearing without taking any testimony. And there'd been a delay in getting out the mailed notices. And so the public hearing was continued to tonight, January 5th, to give those mailed notices time to be received by nearby residents. And, and, but also on that agenda was the site plan review of that same property. And because that did not require any public notice other than being on the agenda, we were able to start that process and look at the design and plan for the parking lot. And the, we had a good discussion with the applicant. The PZC made some suggestions for changes. And Dr. Noramati went back and incorporated some of those into a new plan. So now we have an updated site plan for the lot as well as his existing lot to the south, 2720. And, and that is going to, that plan is going to be the focus of tonight's meeting. All right, so that kind of raises the questions of how we proceed tonight. We've reopened the public hearing. Despite the fact that on the agenda, you'll see special use and variations, and then the site plan review separate and lower, I mean, we're really only looking at the one big plan that he's turned in. So my suggestion would be to take that most current site plan, share it on the screen for the benefit of the PZC members as well as members of the public watching via Zoom. Have staff and petitioner give an overview of the plan. And, and then describe for the benefit of the PZC in particular, the changes that have been made since the last time when they saw similar plan and explain how some of their suggestions have been incorporated, how the plan has changed. Answer any questions from PZC members for staff or petitioner. And then at that time, open it up for public comment, anyone who happens to be calling in and wants to speak or ask questions or voice any concerns or support for the project. Once everyone has the information they need, we can either, the PZC has the option of either closing the public hearing and moving on to consideration of the special use and variations. Or in the event you need more information or there's going to be additional changes, you want to see, you could continue it again. And then move on to consider the site plan approvals for both 2710 and 2720. But again, that consideration should be pretty quick because you've already talked about the one single plan that's before you. And you could take those site plans either in a single vote or separately. Just a reminder that the PZC has final authority over site plan approvals. And your special use and variations are recommendations to the village board. So those will move on to the village board. All right, so unless anyone has any questions, we'll turn it over to Assistant Manager Monroe for further, for the proceedings.
Before we do that, let's swear in anybody who plans to give testimony. If you're going to speak during the public hearing, please stand if you're able, raise your right hand. Dr. Noramati, are you likely to be speaking? Yep. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Mateo. I will go about sharing the screen so we can walk through just a general overview of the most recent site plans submitted. There was a slight change to even what was provided in the packet between the agenda going out and and this morning, we recognized that there was a calculation here in the distance projected on the proposal included in the original, this new proposal, this new revised proposal. And so we'll, we'll explain what that is when, when we're walking through this. So let me just share the screen. All right, can everyone see this site plan before you? We're not, we're not quite yet. How about this?
Yes.
Can everyone see a site plan?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, very good. Francisco, did you explain just the, the basics of what we're looking at here? I'm going to zoom in a little bit, but I'll, I'll just orient you before he starts. To the left of your screen is, it's named existing building. It's kind of the rectangular building. That is 2704 South Harlem. That is not the subject of the discussion today, but included in the site plan so you can see how the parking lots lay against each other. And then as you move to the center of the screen, you have 2710. It's this rectangular version. I will zoom in in a moment so you can get a closer look. But it's a rectangular, pink dotted line. That's the subject of the initial special use request. And then to the right of the screen, you see the existing building. It's kind of a, you know, there's a rectangular sort of box area, the 2720 South Harlem Avenue. It's labeled 36 parking spaces. It's just, that encompasses the entire site plan as proposed. That is before you this evening. I'm going to adjust where on your screen this shows up and zoom in. Is that becoming more clear here? Make sure you can see. There are three existing curb cuts as of right now. The, the one marked where, I'm not sure if you can see my, my pointer or not, but in the center of that screen, in the middle, there's an arrow pointing to a words, and that says exit only. That is currently a blocked entry. The village blocked that off as the vacant lot stands there now. And so that is a change, one change that the petitioner did incorporate into this new proposed site plan. We'll, we'll talk about that more in a moment. The other two drive aisles on the top part of your screen are existing. Francisco, did you want to walk through the couple of features on the lot?
So there are two variances for this property. The first one being that buffer area that fronts Harlem Avenue. The current ordinance states that it needs, it's required to be 10 feet. Currently is eight feet, 10 inches. They are seeking a variation from those standards for that front, that front on Harlem. And then also to the west by the alley, the drive aisle is currently 23 feet, as indicated by the survey. The ordinance states that standard for a two-way drive aisle, which is what this is proposed as, requires it to be 24 feet. So that would be the second variation for this property.
I can share the, the past the past proposal, so you have an idea of what, of what the prior proposal looks like and what the revisions are, so we can, can show you what the changes are here.
Before you leave that, sorry.
Sure.
Um, I
I'll go back.
In our packet, we can't really tell where the ADA parking spots would be, if you could just point those out, please.
Certainly. So to, I'm going to zoom in to that area here. So in the discussion at the December 20th meeting, there was an indication from the village engineer that they should incorporate an additional ADA accessible parking space. There is one currently on the site. And so they would be adding an additional space. So as you can see in this middle section here, right, kind of in the center of your screen, this front area here. There, there's an existing ADA space, and that's the front of the shopping center building. They would add a second space just to the, what, what will be the east of that building. It's currently, the site plan was turned, but that'll be to the east. And they included a second ADA space, and that would meet the requirement based on engineering standards and requirements. So that is one change that we see in the site plan that was made. There was a little bit of discussion during the December 20th meeting about the area just to the south of that, that space as to what, what could be done with that angled area and whether bike parking was able to be installed there. They did show the addition of some bike parking in that location. I will move a little bit this direction. And there was discussion, the prior site plan showed, and I can go back to it if you like, but it's, it's also in the packet, a couple of different versions of the update. There was a big row on the, what is the east part of the property of parking just aligned facing Harlem Avenue. And based on the discussion that the commission had had at the December 20th meeting led the, the idea to not have vehicles backing directly into the drive aisle. This, this drive aisle south, kind of in that same line as the 36 parking spaces that's marked. And so they did turn parking spaces to orient to the north. So kind of on the left of your screen, there's an expansion or extension of parking up to the, the buffer, the landscaped buffer, rather than continuing it across on that east side. In doing so, they opened up this drive aisle at the existing curb cut. So at the December 20th meeting, there was discussion because it wasn't shown on the, the initial proposal reviewed through site plan that there was a closure of that drive aisle. In this proposal, they've opted to, because of the, the change in orientation of parking, to leave that, that curb cut open. But to make it an exit only if onto, back onto Harlem Avenue. So you wouldn't have traffic entering the parking lot. You know, if someone has parked on that, that far north side, you wouldn't expect parking to be, or vehicles to be entering right off of Harlem into that area. Other aspects of change, as we said, we also talked about the landscape buffer. So whether it was possible with the shifting orientation of the parking spaces in this row on the north side here with the cursor here. Whether they could also extend the drive aisle in this north-south drive aisle, the 36 parking spaces kind of shows you where the drive aisle is. Our code requires 24 feet of width there. The initial proposal was smaller than that. It was initially, I think, 20 feet. We and our engineer recommended expanding that somewhat to a minimum of 22 feet. And when the, the petitioner went back and the architect looked at the plan, what they've done is extended the drive aisle width to the code requirement 24 feet, so it would no longer require a variance. And it also would, and it also would slightly minimize the buffered area. So it couldn't meet the full 10 feet of landscaped area, but it does include more of a landscaped buffer than the initial proposal here. It still requires a variation of about 14 inches. But, but otherwise, it's expanded from, from what was shown prior. Moving to the very west side of the property, they have, I should also explain, all of the other parking spaces in this proposal are are front in kind of 90-degree orientation. But for two parallel parking spaces, there was discussion at the December 20th meeting about whether this area, and kind of in the center, I'm circling here, would provide enough driving area for someone who parked parallel to, to maneuver around in the lot. And the length of those parking spaces did not seem to deter engineer from feeling those are, those would be adequate for, for that purpose. There's a little bit of space up here that people can use that area to, you know, reorient themselves to exit out that, that eastern exit. And then finally, I'll just show that there is an adjustment to the proposed site plan that was discussed as the inclusion of a new six-foot screening fence at the, at the west side of the property. So the initial proposal didn't indicate that there was any type of screening between the alley and this property line, and our code requires that as a minimum that, that been in commercial areas, abutting a residential district, there's a level of screening required. I'll just note too, that there is not a requirement for any type of buffering between commercial properties. So when you look at the, at the 2704 South Harlem and 2710 South Harlem, this area and row of parking spaces in the middle of your screen isn't required to have any type of buffer or landscaping because it's zoned the same district. But they do have curb stops so that there isn't going to be you know, parking that's crossing over between, between the parking lot areas. Are there questions from, for staff before? Did I cover, I think, everything, Francisco? Please chime in if there are other changes that were described that we've not addressed, or if, if anyone would like me to show the prior plan for comparison.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question. Are, are there any requirements with regard to the 2010 address for ADA compliant parking spots? I noticed that there's ADA parking spots in the 2020 section, but you don't, we don't need any for the 2010 address. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. The total number of parking spaces, it's, is what triggers an expansion or increase in number of ADA spaces. So that there are 36 total parking spaces between the two lots. It doesn't require an ADA space in a location of the lot that would be likely much farther from, from a door to access. It's, it's very conventional to have ADA accessible parking spaces as close to the doors as possible. It's not always the case, but but that, in this case, the engineer and staff has felt that the addition of two spaces in the lot on 2720 is sufficient.
Thank you.
Of course. Other questions for staff? Okay, well, we'll move on and hear from Dr. Noramati, sorry. If you have anything that you'd like to say.
Yeah, I just actually did a great job of going over all the changes, but I also wanted to point out that we also added some landscape area along Harlem, right there, yep, where she's highlighting there, that wasn't present on the previous plan either. And I also wanted to talk a little bit about kind of the intent and purpose of all this. You know, because there were some questions raised about combining the 2720, 2710, and 2704, and trying to create pass-throughs through all three parcels. And we looked at all that. So obviously, the, the point of all of this is to increase the number of parking that's available for both patrons of the 2720 strip as well as the proposed 2704 dispenser that's going to be coming in. So really, parking maximization is the driving factor in all of this. Adding drive aisles and connecting the parcels minimize that. Also, I do want to point out that, you know, the goal was never to combine all these so that it's just one big parcel. We still want to maintain that these are going to be separate businesses. We do have some parking that will be designated for the We do have some parking that will be designated for the dispensary customers or employees, but you know, essentially, we don't want to lose the identity of, hey, this is one strip center, and this is a separate strip center. So I just wanted to point that out as well. So yeah, we went back and forth, incorporated a lot of the changes that that members of the board and the and the village had brought up to come up with a design that is both aesthetically pleasing, but still maximizes the number of parking spaces that we can achieve. And we did have to give up a little bit of parking to make sure that we have some some green area and landscaping and things like that. So we did, I think we lost about one, one or two parking spaces from that previous design. So this, I feel like, i- is a good mix of, you know, we're maintaining aesthetics and improve, actually improving aesthetics from what we have now, and still achieving the goal of getting enough parking for both businesses to be happy.
Well, I thank you for taking you and your crew for paying attention to our discussion from last last month and incorporating our suggestions and questions and did it so quickly. So we appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions for Dr. Normati? Okay. Is there, are there any interested parties who would like to speak about this project? Okay, hearing done. Commissioners, what are your thoughts right now? Not too many, Chris.
I agree that Dr. Normati's revised proposal does incorporate many of the suggestions that we talked about last month, and that is appreciated. I don't know that there's that much else to say because this is, addresses the concerns that I believe we made before. I was about to ask a question about the the exit only. The the previous version of the plan did not have that was, remind me, and I think it was already mentioned, was that a suggestion of the engineer, or was that just a suggestion to make the circulation better?
Both. So initially, you guys, the board suggested that, you know, we changed the configuration of the parking spaces. Then when we looked at it, we said, well, if we're going to do that from a flow perspective, it makes sense to have cars go out. And that's where I was referring to, where we actually ended up losing some parking there to to allow for that exit again. But, you know, from a circulation standpoint, it makes more sense. Now you've got another point of exit, and you don't have a bottleneck of everyone trying to get out from one curb cut.
And that's true. So and I I'm taking no exception to it. I'm just noting it is probably the most significant change from the previous version. But it does, it will aid your circulation, definitely. But again, no, no objection, and thank you for incorporating our comments.
You're welcome.
Francisco, I forgot to ask, did the office, the village, receive any comments since the agenda was published?
No, no comments or phone calls or written letters, no.
Thank you. Other thoughts, commissioners? Because remember, once we close, if we choose to close the public hearing, the discussion is just amongst us.
I I have a question with regard to how you you mentioned, doctor, that you that there will be allotted spaces for the your neighboring building to the north. Approximately, how many spaces are you are you thinking?
As of right now, there, it's going to be about five spaces for the 2704 property. So we were adding about approximately 15, so five will go to them, 10 will stay for our plaza.
And there'll be signs on those designated parking?
Yes.
Where would they, where would they be, excuse me, where would they be in the in the lot? Would they, I'm assuming that they'd be on the north side.
Exactly, yeah, probably right closest to their property. So maybe down there, we haven't actually specified, but I guess it would make more sense either the first five parking spots on the top-left side of the 2710 parcel.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I had a question for staff regarding, is the petitioner, are we going to be considering a variation from the rear buffer yard requirement? The five-foot buffer yard requirement tonight? 1097? This is a question for staff.
We, the only two variations that I believe we're seeking is the is the street yard buffer requirement and the drive aisle buffer. The public alley, I believe we talked last meeting about that being split even in in half, in which case with a 16-foot public alley width, there would be sufficient area for that five-foot, five-foot buffer waiver. Is that, is that your understanding, Michael? Or remembering what we had discussed last?
Right, I I I think what we talked about last time was whether the alley, the presence of the alley and the 16 feet negated that. And staff was, I think, looking into past practice. And I if it was determined that, you know, the presence of the alley made it different than a property that was directly adjacent to a residential lot. And so it was determined that the buffer is not necessary.
Okay, so that was, that was a, that, okay. So that's not in front of us tonight. Thank you.
All right, we have two variations, as Assistant Village Manager just described, the drive aisle width and the perimeter landscaping along with the special use. Commissioner Peltier, do you have any questions, comments?
I don't know. I would echo Commissioner Marhol's comments that our our comments from last meeting seem to have been addressed sufficiently. And I think this is, you know, there may be some improvements that could be made, but this is a very good site plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Matthews?
No, I I don't, I don't have any comments except to agree with Commissioner Peltier and Mr. Marhol said previously.
All right, it sounds like we don't have any further questions, Dr. Normati, which do you want to say anything in closing?
No, I thank you guys for the feedback. It actually helped improve the site plan, so I'm really happy with it. I think it'll serve the community well, and I think it'll add to the aesthetics along Harlem. And then I also do want to point out that part of the sales agreement, we will be including a Village of Riverside signage in that landscaped area where it says signage. So I think that'll be a nice entry point to the village as well. So I think overall, it's going to be a great addition for for everybody.
And again, is there anyone, go ahead. I heard some, is there anyone else who's on the call who wants to say anything before we conclude? Okay, so do we have a motion to either continue or close this public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so now we can continue our discussion amongst ourselves and staff. Again, we'll have the special use to vote on with a set of standards and the two variations to vote on with their set of standards. Do we want further discussion, or are we ready to make motions?
We'd be ready to make motions. Simply on the basis that most of this was discussed last time around.
Any other thoughts?
I agree.
So do we have a motion to recommend approval of the special use?
Yes, motion to approve the special use.
Second.
Okay. I have to go back to my PDF so I can find the standards. You should know them by now. Okay, special use, page 24, for those who want to read along. Okay. The first standard, the proposed use is designated by the zoning ordinance as a special use in the district in which the use is to be located.
That's correct.
The second one, the proposed use will comply with all applicable regulations in the district in which the use is to be located. Any disagreement there?
No disagreement.
Third, the location and size of the proposed use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respects to streets giving access to it are such that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located.
That's true. This is a parking lot and commercial area that is accessed, for the most part, off Harlem Avenue rather than residential streets.
Any other thoughts on that one? Four, the location, nature and height of buildings, walls and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that the use will not be unreasonable, will not unreasonably hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of the adjacent land and buildings.
Agreed. That's obviously in that, right.
Five, parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use, properly located and suitably screened from adjoining uses, and the entrance and exit drives will be laid out so as to prevent traffic hazards and nuisances.
I believe this is true.
Agreed.
Six, the proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood.
That's correct, especially with the buffer of the alley on the east-west, excuse me.
Okay. And the seventh one doesn't apply. That's one year has elapsed since any denial by the village board. Okay. Do we, so that let's have a roll call on that, please.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, for the two variations, we can take them separately, or we can take them together. Any opinions?
I think we should take them together.
Agree.
Anyone with a different opinion? Okay, is there a motion to recommend approval of the two variations again? Now, they're in the packet. Is there a motion to recommend approval of the variations?
Yes, motion to approve the variations requested.
Second?
Second?
Second.
Okay. Let me go through those standards. The first one, because of a particular physical or other unusual condition of the specific property involved, a particular hardship or practical difficulty to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to, the presence of an existing use or structure, whether conforming or non-conforming, irregular or substandard shape or size, exceptional topographical features, or other extraordinary physical condition peculiar to and inherent in the subject property that amounts to more than a mere inconvenience to the owner, and that relate to or arises out of the lot and of the structures thereon, rather than the personal situation of the current owner. Or situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from re-establishing, restoring, or maintaining a material feature or significant architectural feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot or structure. What are your thoughts on the difficulties?
I don't believe number two applies, but with regards to number one, the location of the existing building is such that the dimensional requirements are ever so slightly more than the available space between the faces of the building and the existing right-of-way and/or the existing lot line to the north.
Other thoughts on hardship and difficulty?
I agree with the Commissioner Marhol's assessment.
Okay. Anybody disagree that this standard has been met? Okay. B, the purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain. It's actually costing money. C, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property.
That's correct.
Right.
The condition, D, the condition upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification.
That's correct. It's specific to this, the location of this building on this lot.
And the way B1C is currently developed, there really aren't any other locations that we could identify right now that would be trying to put in a parking lot.
Correct.
E, the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located.
That's correct. If anything, this will benefit the the property to the north as well.
F, the granting of the variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
That's correct. This is a designated business district.
And finally, G, the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of the public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values in the neighborhood.
That's correct for some of the reasons we've already stated. Plus, as already noted, the access is off a arterial roadway and does not affect the adjacent properties. And we are also not building any structures and adding some landscaping. So air and light are equally unaffected, or air may be improved with vegetation.
And drainage will be addressed during the permitting process when it gets there. Any final comments? Okay, please call the roll to vote on the recommending the variations to the board.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Let's move on to the old business continued site plan review. Again, we're considering 2710 and 2720 together. We can, well, any, again, not to We can, well, any, again, not to protract this, any more discussion on this? I'm not trying to squelch it.
Uh, Commissioner? Chairperson Mateo, I do not believe you are trying to squelch the process. I believe we've adequately discussed this at the previous meeting, and as previously noted earlier today, the petitioner has implemented many of the requested changes that we had made. Or, sorry, the changes we had asked for.
So if we're ready to move on to voting on this, we can discuss the two parcels together, or we can discuss the, vote on them separately. What do you prefer?
I believe it's appropriate to discuss them together since this is essentially one parking lot.
Anyone disagree? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the site plan at 2710 and 2720 South Harlem Avenue?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, John. Any last comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Chairman, uh Chairperson Mateo, did you want to look at the standards at all?
Oh. That's right, thank you. They're on page 49. Thank you for that, Attorney Morris. And if there are any comments from the public, please feel free to share. Okay. First, the arrangement of the structures on the site. Do they ensure compatibility with the development on adjacent property, respond to existing off-site utilities and service conditions to minimize the demand for additional municipal services, utilities, or infrastructure?
Yes, that's correct.
It's an existing building, so there's really no new demand.
Do we meet the criteria of with the organization of circulation systems minimizing potentially dangerous traffic movements, providing adequate and safe access to the site, separating pedestrian and auto circulation whenever practical, and minimizing curb cuts?
Yes.
Yes, although the previous version had one less curb cut, this, this current version has two, but that provides for better circulation and arguably um slightly safer because people will not be struggling to get out or get past each other.
It also eliminates the drive off of Long Common, which was across um the sidewalk in kind of the uh unexpected location. So I think it actually improves the safety of access to the site.
I support Commissioner Peltier's observation.
The design of off-street parking lots or garages that minimize adverse impacts on adjacent properties and promotes logical, safe parking and interconnection with adjacent parking lots.
I believe this is true. And we've already identified the fact that this limits all of the in-and-out movements to Harlem Avenue for the most part, which is beneficial to the local residents.
And these standards are somewhat general, so the, the phrase interconnection with adjacent parking lots, it's not required to.
As uh the petitioner noted, this is probably better because it provides better definition between the 2720 and 2710 parking lot and the future dispensary location to the north.
For the design of landscaping, screening, and related improvements, promote and maintain village standards for appearance and development quality, promote harmonious transitions to adjoining lots and developments, create a desirable and functional environment for motorists, pedestrians, and occupants of residential dwellings, business owners and employees, screens incompatible uses, and minimizes the visual impact of the development on adjacent sites and roadways, and utilizes approved plant materials listed in appendixy of the zoning ordinance and that are suitable to withstand the climatic conditions of the village, respect village designation as a na- national historic landscape district, and are compatible and consonant with the adjacent public plantings. We haven't seen a planting list, but that's something that staff will work with the petitioner on at some point. Do we think the standard has been met?
Yes, um, I assume that staff will ensure that the plantings are appropriate, and the petitioner has added the fence along the alley, which serves as a visual buffer to the west. And then the petitioner is also adding the landscape areas on the east edge of the lot as our ordinance requires, and he has tried to maximize them as well.
Five, site illumination in terms of fixture type and design, location and installation in a manner that will minimize adverse impacts to adjacent properties. We were told that the lights would be shielded as is required by our lighting ordinance. Any other thoughts on that one? Six, conformance of the proposed development to the requirements of the zoning ordinance and other applicable codes and ordinances.
Yes, and we've get, we've already given the appropriate variations.
And special use. And finally, the seven, the relationship of the site plan to adopted village land use policies and plans.
I think it's consistent with our, our land use policies for the B1 district.
Any further discussion? And please call the roll.
Uh, Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for this great discussion, and I do think the plans are definitely improved and will be a nice addition to that corner of town. We have no new business. Uh, for information, remember, our next meeting is January 26. It'll be by Zoom, and we will have a public hearing to consider a variation request. Also, um, at the end of December, the 29th, the Steering Committee for the Zoning Code Update uh met and had a good discussion, and we'll be moving forward um sending the proposed amendments to PZC. I don't know if we'll get them on in January. I hope so, because it's 100, 200-some pages long. It's going to be a lot to get through, but you got to start at some point. Any questions on that? Okay. Motion to adjourn? Commissioner Marhol?
Chairperson Mateo, has there been any news on the requested um development for the apartment building that was discussed last month?
Uh, there is. Assistant Village Manager Monroe, would you like to tackle that one?
So after the December 20th uh meeting, the petitioner contacted me and had additional questions about opportunities um to expand parking elsewhere. Um, ultimately, they came to the conclusion that they didn't want to proceed with additional uh requests at this time. I am not sure of the ultimate status of the purchase agreement that they had and as a proposed, you know, offer on that building. Um, so I'm not certain at this point in time whether you'll see them return with the same request that might be modified, or um whether they would request any variations to that same site plan. And um it remains to be seen, yeah, whether they'll be a purchaser of that building or not. So um if they are, then there may be further attempts or discussions with PZC, but for now, there's, there's no planned uh return for, for meeting. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you. I, I understand that it's very much up to the future purchaser. Just curious.
Thanks for asking. By the way, our recommendation will go to the village board tomorrow. They'll be discussing it tomorrow night at their meeting, if anybody wants to zoom in. Anything else? All right, one hour. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. That adjourns the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Stay healthy, stay safe, and uh see you later this month.